Please sign that up so we can manage our time effectively. We'll start by standing and saying pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want us to declare an open meeting?
So.
Second?
Second.
In favor of saying aye?
Aye.
There's a notification of the Open Meetings Act that's posted on the door in the back of the room. Would you like to read it? Melissa? Yep. Self here. I have this. Mike?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Here it is. You entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as.
Second?
Second.
Second to approve the agenda, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion. Motion carried. Number seven, consent agenda. Be approved in minutes from last month and also the minutes of the February two special meeting. And let those over. Any questions on the minutes then we can move on to financial reports? No questions on that, we can go on into the claims.
The H V bill was what it was.
That's what this was, it's on senior pairs. For the ones in high school.
Question? Any questions? Not all. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, I'll see you.
I'll second.
Second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, we're gonna move on into public comment, how many speakers do we have? If anybody get a chance to sign up if you want to speak. Uh, we thought maybe we would have a large amount of speakers, so we might need to redo our policy, but it looks like we've got five or six, so our current policy should cover the time period. At least if we wanted to probably not get too, too long tonight, but we should be in good shape, so. I gotta say that we'll allow the comment in the order that you signed up on the sign up sheet. After being recognized, we ask each speaker state their name, their hometown, and the organization they represent. Speaker, then we'll have a maximum of five minutes to speak. Mr. Fromm, we'll keep time and notify you at a raised hand when you have thirty seconds remaining, so you conclude your comments. You realize the events of the last few weeks have brought out some strong opinions on both sides regarding action item fourteen. What I can tell you right now is that we have reached an agreement between the board and Dr. Earl, which we discussed later, and determination is not on the table today. We ask that you please try to keep your comments respectful in nature, and we appreciate your willingness to abide by these guidelines. I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna read our public comment policy at this time. So we are now at the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person willing, wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president and must stand and state your name. They'll have up to five minutes to speak and only one opportunity to do so. Please remember this meeting of Plainview Public Schools Board of Education is held in public, and comments or conduct that are rude, obscene, profane, slanderous, threatening, or hostile will not be tolerated. Be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comment is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board on an open session. Board members will listen and take comments under advisement, but will not respond to questions or comments. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operations. So, looking at our sheet for tonight, we've got Trent Tarr, first up.
What's that, Trent Tarr, Plainview, I represent myself. So, I just wanted to say that I had this post written by another employee, it doesn't matter who wrote it, you know, or whatever, however it was said, doesn't matter, it just looks bad. And, yeah, it shouldn't, shouldn't matter at this point, and the tweet was unacceptable and unprofessional. It looks bad to the district and it doesn't represent the district's beliefs, I don't think. But yet, you're tied to it. What does matter is that whatever you guys decide tonight is being watched by everybody, not just locally. So, it just sets a precedence for the district, for the next person that does something, you know what I mean? So, that's pretty much what I wanted to say, is just to be, be thankful to the district and the future of the students in the district when you made your decision.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we've got Kyle Tarr.
Kyle Tarr, plain view. Talked to an individual that works with the NSA more very closely, as for years. He does wrestling, basketball tournaments, works every state tournament through it down there. Spent quite a lot of time speaking with him this weekend. And he said after all the places he's been in the last two weeks, he said ninety percent of the people that are there said that if you as a school board do not represent what was said and do not follow through, he said he's fairly sure that next year's wrestling program will be a disaster for Plainview Public Schools. They will hold it against our kids. That our kids are gonna suffer because of this, because coaches aren't gonna invite the boys or the girls to tournaments. I mean, you guys gotta look at the consequences across the whole board, but you already said your decision's been made. So, what's the public comment good for tonight? If you already made your decision before this meeting, public comment's no good to you. You already made your decision, so what good are you asking for people's comments? And then, you already made your decision.
It hasn't, it has not been voted on.
Okay. You just said then that your decision was made. Our, our determinations off the, whatever, okay, yeah.
Right.
It hasn't been voted, okay.
It has not been voted.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Uh, next up, Mike Bernicker.
Yeah, Mike Bernicker from Plainview. I'd like to address a couple items, one being Dr. Earl's post and then item agenda number twelve. And as far as Dr. Earl's post goes, it's unfortunate that the point he was trying to make came across as it did. The description of the girls and their sport as a whole were not correct or necessary. Knowing him as I do, he's very sorry for what he said. He made a mistake, as all of us have done before, and needs to be forgiven. It's time to move on. As far as number twelve goes, this has to do with the candidates for the teaching position of Chad Schumacher and two qualified candidates, both good from what I've heard, one of them being Kelly Langitfeller. And I was surprised she was not selected for the position. Ever since she's been at Plainview, she's been involved with education, athletics, and various activities with our school system. Whenever the school system needed her, she was there. She cares about the kids, like all the teachers do, but she extremely cares about the kids. And this particular position she's been looking forward to hopefully getting ever since she's been here. I've read the reasons for selecting the other applicant, I understand those, but I just wanted to leave you with the message and the intent that I was here. And that is that I'm disappointed in the administration for not giving her the loyalty and appreciation that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up on the list is Kristy Anderson.
I just put it there in case I said I wanted to say something, so I'll pass.
Okay. Uh, next up, Kayden Alexander.
Yeah, Kayden Alexander from Plainview. Wear a lot of hats, but I'm speaking for myself. Just in regards to, to Dr. Earl, I won't speak for anyone in particular. Most people don't agree that it was done or done the way that it was, so I think we can move past that. My main concern is the well-being of the district in my eyes. Got four little boys myself, just getting into the school system. Uh, I coach ten months out of the year, very involved in the school, have a lot of young families that do as well, and that's great. What I see is a, we have a superintendent that is more involved than any other one I've ever seen. Uh, when I pick my kids up or come to practice, he's out at the buses, getting kids on the bus safely. He's driving kids to and from meets and basketball games, and he's announcing and keeping score. I just don't think there's a person in Plainview that wants Plainview or Plainview Community Schools to succeed more than Dr. Earl personally. So I think we'd be doing more harm than good if we were to not reinstate him. Yeah, I, you know, on the, on the wrestling thing, uh, being around, I haven't heard that our kids or our team is gonna face consequences from that. I'm sure there's people saying that. We've traveled all over the state, we haven't heard anything like that, or I haven't. Uh, I think most people are bigger than that. I, I think people are just ready to move on in our world, at least in my world, I won't speak for other people. But, but I guess I'd just like to, like to see him come back and continue to do a good job and learn from it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, last one on the list is Lana Mosel.
I'm Lana Mosel from Plainview, I represent myself. Along the lines of Dr. Earl also. I just agree, stand by what Kayden Alexander said. You know, there's administration that I haven't seen hardly even leave their office. I'm not saying that they're not doing their job, but we have an administrator that is there for kids, young, all the way through high school, and still following kids that have graduated. I know that he's made stuff in the past where not everyone agrees with what he's done or how he's handled it or whatever, but I don't think he should be held accountable for that stuff and people just be angry with him on issues they've had in the past with him. When it comes to what happened, what he wrote, I know that there was a lot of anger for what a lot of people in the wrestling community are going through. You know, there's parents fearing that they might not get to watch their kids wrestle, let alone their fan base. And we're, we're gonna have to go two ways. He may have said that the girls were not ready for primetime, but he also followed that up with they're ready for their own spotlight. He hasn't, I've been asked, he hasn't come to a lot of the girls' wrestling events. But that's not because he doesn't support them, that's because he's been following the boys, you know, I mean, it's, he's reached out, he's always reached out, "How'd you do?", always asking us for information on, so he can post some stuff. Um, he's very supportive of the girls, and as my fifteen-year-old said, that she accepts his apology and that she understands that he's human, he's made mistakes, and that she just wishes that he wouldn't have done it on such a platform, that he's now being made an example of. If my fifteen-year-old can say that herself and accept his apology when she was directly affected by all of this, I think the world needs to lead by her example. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Lana. Thanks, everybody, for the comments, keeping him respectful, appreciate it. Uh, we're gonna move on to number nine, discussion items, committee report from the negotiations committee. Mike's gonna try to get to it.
Okay. Deb, Melissa, and I are on this committee. We've been meeting with the teachers' negotiation group for a lot of times, as long as I've ever been with them. So we're gonna go through the contract and the changes that were made, for the three that weren't on the committee. Yeah, the contract, the highlights, and the changes. First ones are just dates, two years, if this covers, it's a two-year contract. Two for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. So the compartment needs to change in wording from "is" to "there", so that just covers the base there. Uh, if you go on page three at the bottom, is our, our agreement on the base salary change. It's a three percent raise for each year. So the base will go from thirty-eight-eight this year to forty thousand for the following year. And then, uh, year after that's another three percent, the base will go to forty-one thousand on the base. Now, we did put in there that at the EHA rates, which is their insurance, if it goes up next year from four-point-one percent to six percent, we will deduct two-hundred dollars off of that base to help cover those increases. And also for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six year, if it goes up, let's see, what's the amount of that? Oh, if it goes up over the six-point-one percent, then it'll be another two-hundred dollars off of the base. So, we, that's pretty common that we have that in there in case the insurance rates, you never know, they've been going up drastic some years. Last couple of years haven't been too bad, but I have seen over that, that went into effect. Okay, on page four, um, and this is just kind of a formality. We took out a column a couple of years ago, and there were some teachers that lost payment when we took that column out of their, out of their pay, and with those teachers that were receiving that pay, stayed, continued to receive that. And, oh, I went wrong one here. Oh, this one is, uh, so right now our teachers, our new teachers that come in, they started at year three. We made that decision quite a few years ago to give them incentive to come here. And so they start out on a year-three pay scale, and they stay there for the three years before they start to move. And we put in this year that, um, they reside within the s- the school district on the second and third year, those contracts, they can receive a thousand dollar a year bonus if they live within the district. Just try and encourage them to live here, bring their families, so.
They get a thousand dollars a year once.
Every year, yes.
Just in the, the second and third years?
Third year, yeah.
Only in the second.
Okay. Okay, this is the one I started talking about, where we had those teachers that lost that pay, and we had to reimburse them for that. And in the past, we'd been putting that back into the contract every year and changing, changing the contract. This, this year, we just put it in for those teachers that they get that pay for the duration that they're at Plainview, so we don't have to change it every year to another year.
And they're listed.
And they're listed here, and as they either retire or move on somewhere else, their names will be pulled out of that list. But those teachers lost about four-point-two percent off of their base when we changed that column. So it's reimbursing them for that loss. And that was their contract last year, and it's, it's just a wording change, so we don't have to change the contract every year. Page five. Okay, this company's, uh, people that help run the scoreboards and take money at the door, Junior High, JV, reffing, those types of things. We have been setting those pay scales with, with the teachers in the past, with the board. We're gonna change that to where this will be done by the board with board policy, so we don't have to negotiate that with the teachers every time. And that's also, it's a two-year contract with the teachers, this allows us to look at that every, whenever we wanna look at it, if it's in policy, we can look at it every year. So, and there's reason why we wanna change it, is because it's getting harder and harder to find people that wanna work, and so we may have to update that on the fly on some of the stuff, so we wanted to get it to where the board had the ability to do that at any time. Page seven, IRA contribution. This is, excuse me, this is the one that took the most time, we had to meet quite a few times on this. We have been talking about doing a longevity for teachers, a bonus for longevity, and that's how it started out, talking, and we ended up with this, which is a little bit of a longevity, but probably isn't quite what we thought we were looking for at first, but I think the, the teachers are really kind of excited about this. Most teachers don't have a retirement plan, other than what's taken out of their check, the government or whatever. And so we wanted to help them start a retirement plan investment. So what we're gonna do is, the school's gonna pay, they have to have a minimum of twenty-five dollars for a IRA plan.
Per month.
Per month. And the school is gonna furnish fifteen dollars out of that twenty-five for the first ten years?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. And they have to come up with the other ten, ten dollars per month. If they don't wanna do it, if they don't wanna put ten dollars in, they can elect out of it, but they won't get the fifteen dollars unless they put the ten in. So that gets them started in a retirement plan, young. And then after fifteen years, we'll pay the full twenty-five, so they don't have to put anything in, but we're open by that time, they'll see the benefit of it and continue to have their own share too, but also. And then at year twenty-five, it goes to thirty, I think? We'll put the thirty.
And it's retroactive to the current year.
Yes. So, a lot of the teachers on this committee are teachers that have been here a while, and they were very in favor of this because they're teachers that have not put money into retirement on their own, and they're finding out five years to retirement, they don't have much of retirement, and they're trying to catch up or wish they would have done it sooner. So they were very on board with this to get the younger teachers started at this. So, I think both parties are, are pretty happy with this agreement.
Is something kind of unique to you, right?
Yes.
The person from, do you remember his name? The people, Pramik O'Kelly, the company that would go through the IRA.
Compass.
Compass.
Compass. He came, we met him online, did a Zoom with him, and he does schools in Kansas and Nebraska. He said we're probably the first school in Nebraska that's set anything up like this for the teachers. He said they have about a half a dozen in Kansas that are doing it, but he doesn't think anybody in Nebraska's doing it yet, so. Of course, he was all for it, but he was selling the plan, so. So, I think that is the changes.
No, the leaves are different.
Oh, yeah. You know more about that, or is it?
So, we have offered a totally different package for leave. So, at the beginning of each school year, each teacher will be credited with five days of PTO, daytime off to be used at the discretion of the teachers. All unused sick days at the end of the year will go into a sick bank. So before, they just had sick leave and two personal leave. This gives them five days a year to choose what, if it's personal or, but they have to use their sick days. If the unused one goes to the sick bank for the next year. They must use a, an annual allotment of the PTO before dipping into any banked days. So your five PTOs have to be used first. The sick bank max is forty-five days. If an annual allotment of sick days or carryover of unused PTO days pushes a teacher's total above forty-five days, they'll be paid half the current sub-rate back down to forty-five days. If a teacher retires and has forty-five days in their sick bank, they will be paid half of the current sub-rate for that day drawing down to zero. For retirees less than forty-five days in their sick bank, the pay max will be ten dollars a day. So that's different too. So this, this is nice.
In the past, they got ninety-six days a year, two personal days.
In the past, it, what is it, ten sick days and two personal? I believe that's what I have.
Crossed out.
Nine and two? Nine and two? Nine sick days, yeah. So, rather than nine sick days, you get five of those are PTO, how you can choose, however you choose. Except for, I believe, before and after vacations, a qualification, like to extend a vacation. You can't extend Easter.
Positions.
Whatever, so. So that, that's a positive, I think, too. Yes, it's a two-year contract.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the teachers are excited about that.
Yes, it's, it's really a nice package, and it's nice to be one of the few schools that are offering our, our staff this.
Well, thank, thanks to the negotiation phase, for, you know, as many times as you guys had to meet, because things like this.
And it was basically so many times because we were trying to get it worked out, so it was fair for teachers that had been several years. The first package they came with was great, but the, see, the teachers that had been here multiple years, it didn't help them or give them any incentive at all, and we just felt like they need to be rewarded for their service too. So that's what, it's just trying to fine-tune everything.
Well, we shared with them what our goals are as board members, you know, retention and longevity.
Absolutely.
And they worked so well with us.
Good to hear. Great, uh, moving into the action items. Number ten, discuss and take possible action on Board of Education committee assignments appointed by the president. We should have got a copy of that, kind of the committees that have appointed people on for the next year. Just made a few changes. Everybody is okay with that, if we are. You entertain a motion to accept the assignments. Make a motion to accept the Board of Education committee assignments appointed by the president. Okay, we can second accept the committee assignments for twenty-twenty-four. Self, yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carried, so. You want number eleven? Discuss and take possible action on approving membership in Nebraska Association of School Boards for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-fifteen. We have, we got a letter, you know, from A S B thanking, you know, board members for being, on the, you know, willing to commit the time and energy. A S B works for us down in the legislature. They put on a lot of educational opportunities for us, just do a lot of good work for the school boards. A good resource to have. Something that will be going on each year. Something that will be going on each year at this time. I think that's very worthwhile, having one of these.
We've used them a lot in the last ten days.
Yeah. Good resource to have, to go through something like this.
I'll make a motion that we approve membership of the NSA SB for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
Okay, moving to second, to approve membership in NSB for twenty-four and twenty-five. Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Self, yes.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, six oh. Moving on then to item number twelve. Discuss and take possible action on offering a one point oh FTE teaching contract to John Torey. Guys have got a resume right here in the, in the packet. I just want to, want to point out that the board is not responsible for hiring. Job is to support our administration. As a hire, they do, you know, our best to, 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 to.
I just wanted to comment on this and say that this is probably, I don't know, since I've been on the board, one of the hardest decisions or whatever that I've, I've experienced. And I've experienced a lot, but this was really a tough, tough decision, I'm sure for Kyle. Both, both candidates are extremely qualified. And I'm glad I wasn't in the shoes to have to make that decision. But I've always been one to go with the administration. I've been in these situations before. We hire the superintendent and the higher, superintendent hires the principals and the principals hire the teachers. And that's, that's the way it goes. May not always agree with it, but this, this one's really tough. But I, I gotta stand by, you know, what I've done in the past, I think. And, and honor our superintendent and our, our administrators. So that's just my opinion.
My only opinion that I'd like to say is regarding the email for the, the reasoning behind hiring this one over Kelly. I just feel like the only category that actually he benefits over what Kelly could do is probably a football coach. I think Kelly could probably be an athletic director if she wanted to be. And she is from Plainview, and we seem to always have a big, make a big deal about hiring alumni. So that's just my argument, I guess.
Yeah, two really good candidates, I think.
Well, yeah, one thing I thought of too is, we know what, what Kelly brings. She's been here for a long time and what she's done, she's proven herself. For this guy, you know, on paper, he's proven himself, but we don't know down the road how it's going to work out. I'm not saying it won't. I'm just saying those are the two differences in my mind. One, we go for sure, the other, we're assuming he's going to be a good candidate, so.
Any other thoughts?
Motion?
If not, we'll, we'll motion then to accept a contract next year.
I'll make a motion to offer a certified teaching contract to Mr. John Torey for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second?
Second.
Moving to second to accept certified teaching contract to Mr. John Torey for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carried, four to. Moving on to number thirteen. Discuss and take possible action on free and negotiated contract between the DILs, Plainview Public Schools and the PPEA for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, point six contract years. That's what we had just discussed here from the negotiating committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the negotiated agreement for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six between Plainview Public Schools Board of Education and the PPEA.
Second.
Okay, it's the move to second to approve the negotiated agreement for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six between Plainview Public Schools Board of Education and the PPEA. Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Self, yes.
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 Chance?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, six oh. And we're going to move on to number fourteen on the agenda. Discuss and take possible action on the negotiated consequences for Dr. Darren Law. I just want to give the public an update as to kind of how this all came together. Shortly after the comments were made on roughly the twenty ninth of January, we came together at a committee meeting on the January thirty-first. From that meeting, we decided that things needed to be taken a little bit further. So we scheduled an emergency discussion meeting for Friday night, February second. And at that time, we had a very closed session, we had a good chat amongst all of us. And we came to a general agreement between the board and, and Dr. Arl on the consequences of his actions and sort of the board expectations we're going to work on him going forward. A few more details came up in the next week that needed to be worked out. So we also had another committee meeting on last Wednesday just to kind of hammer out some more details. It was on February sixth. And from that being, kind of go over some recommendations that we're presenting to the board tonight. I guess what you would call it is a consequence agreement that had been drafted. It's been agreed to. And that's what we're going to be discussing and voting on tonight. This, this document is a, it's considered a private document. Dr. Arl has given us permission to present some of the terms that's in that document. But it's, it is a private document between the board and Dr. Arl, the same way like an evaluation would be. It's going to be kept in his personal, personnel file in the office, so. I would like to read a summary of the conditions on the agreement, so everybody knows what that's going to entail. So as a consequence of his actions, Superintendent Arl has agreed to continue working remotely without pay, retroactive to February first, and continuing through March sixth. A one-twelfth reduction in pay will be applied to the remaining five period, will be applied throughout the remaining five pay periods of his current contract. He will be allowed to access the school office if needed, but only during evening or weekend hours while no school activities are taking place. He has also agreed to discontinue posting on personal social media accounts in a way that could reflect negatively on the district. He will identify and attend a board-approved educational course or sensitivity training at his own expense that is focused on the impact of posts like this on his leadership. And finally, during the time of his remote work, he will not be attending any VHS or NSAA activities without, with the exception of events involving an immediate family member. So those are some of the conditions that they put forward and Dr. Arl has agreed to. So there's any, you know, more discussion, comments, or take that, this thing, things like this?
I just want to comment on, on him doing the work from home. That's not something he's required to do by any means because he's not getting paid for this time. And he could have said he didn't want to do the work and, and he wouldn't have been able, I mean, he volunteered to do that, is what I'm saying. So he wants to still be a part of this school as much as he can and, and keep it running from, from where he has to do it from. He doesn't want to see it fall behind, or he doesn't want to see us have to hire somebody else to fill his place in this timeframe that would be another expense to us, so.
I just want to go on record and say that I was strongly for him. He terminated, that's all I want to say, so everybody knows that.
You got that voted? Well, we haven't voted.
It probably doesn't even say that, you know, he didn't come up with this, doing it on her own, consulting with NSB and our legal counsel. Anyway, make sure that every, I was dotted, D was crossed. A lot of conversations there. Anyway, make sure that we're definitely doing the right thing anyway, as far as we're within our rights.
I took every phone call. I answered every message. I responded to everyone. There was a majority. Your voices were heard, and I represent you. It is not just what our opinions are as board members. We heard you as your, as a community. This is your voice, this is your decision. There was a vast majority of what people wanted to have in here. You were heard.
Yeah, it is a large majority, large majority of all calls and text messages that I took. Were definitely in his favor.
Yes.
And I think the majority of the board took similar phone calls, text messages, in his favor to bring him back to the stadium. So, personal feelings aside, anyway, that's, that's, our job is not, you know, it's a.
Not arguing.
We can go on the record, like you did, Chance, that's absolutely within your right. But we represent the district, we represent our constituents, and.
That's what I did, I had.
We all wanted, we all wanted him gone.
We all represent a definite portion of those constituents.
Those ones, the ones that I took, anyway, a large majority, anyway, wanted him to stay.
You know, I, we do feel that he's, he's remorseful, I mean, this, that is genuine. His comments were unfortunate, unnecessary, in such a public forum. He recognizes the negative attention that's been brought on the district. It tends to overshadow the positive things that have gone on here, because there's a lot of those too. But it has put a lot of unnecessary stress on the students, staff, community, and the members of this board. It's not been easy two weeks for us. But we can't forget that Dr. Arl has done, we have good things here at Plainview. Top of them, to my mind, is positivity, the care for the students, dedication to his job, the level of pride that he has for his school, his hometown, it's truly community.
If you need an example, like what happened this summer when they blew off elementary school. Right?
Yeah.
The way that he took a hold of that situation, like, make sure that we start school on time. Got the contract due the next day, made sure it's just what you call, did a great job with that amendment, I think, I would say. So I, I don't doubt his skills at all as a superintendent, not one bit, or that he cares, so.
He's, he's apologized to those he's let down multiple times. Something that's going to, you know, he's going to have to live with for a long time. They've had a grumble for a decent length of time, a mistake. They'll hold up to it and come back and, and be better for, for this whole situation. Everybody in here has made a mistake before. Everybody in here deserves forgiveness. We're willing to forgive and no longer become another person for, it's unfortunate.
Worked for several administrators, and you're right, he loves his school, he loves kids, he loves being here. This is, this is his place where he likes to be. I wish everybody would go to their job and feel that way about the job. He does.
Any objections? No. Take a motion then to approve the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the consequence agreement agreed upon by Board of Education Plainview Public Schools and Dr. Darren Arl, Superintendent of Schools. Now, what's second to it?
Moving to second to approve the consequence agreement agreed upon by Board of Education Plainview Public Schools and Dr. Darren Arl, Superintendent of Schools. Myself, yes.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, five, one. Except for discussion, or for the action items, we're going to move on then to reports, starting with our activities directive report.
Boys' basketball finished conference in third. They're the number one seed for sub-districts next week. We'll host all those teams starting on Monday. Girls' basketball finished runner-up in conference. They're, they're the one seed, sub-districts start tomorrow. We host that as well. Wrestling finished as conference champs in fifth place at state duels. Kingsley Mosel made it through sub-districts and competed at districts in York on Friday. And then our boys qualified seventh in the state, Guy, Bo, Colt, Landon, John, Hayden and Xander. So they'll be competing Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this week. Bowling finished, they have their district bowling in Kingsley and Norfolk. And they had their best performance of the year, so Coach Risinger and Coach Door were really happy with their performance. For schedule-wise, I'm looking at splitting junior high girls' wrestling. So this year, we had junior high girls' basketball, junior high girls' wrestling at the same time. So next year, I want to do girls' basketball before Christmas, girls' wrestling after Christmas. So girls have the opportunity to do both. Same as what our boys do now, they wrestle before Christmas, play basketball after Christmas. So trying to get those separated, so everybody has the opportunity to do both. We have our first meeting tomorrow with the new conference members to start discussing bylaws and what a conference would look like and different schedules and what we want everything to look like. So we're going to start that conversation moving forward, like I said, again, tomorrow. Football schedules are out for the next two years, officials are hired, games are set for all of those. And I said, we're hosting both boys' and girls' sub-district basketball games. And in the future, the NSA has already approved that shot clocks be used in class A. More likely, that's going to get passed here in April for all classes to use it. So probably next month, I will be bringing some information forward about costs for installation and shot clocks for our gyms, so we can meet the requirements of the NSA for our kids to compete. So just to give you a heads up on that. It's going to be a busy time, but it's going to be fun though. Kids are going to have a lot of success.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to number sixteen, our principal's report.
The only additions that I have is that JPP is sponsoring a father-daughter dance this weekend. And we're looking at doing a mother-son dance in April. Our pirate branch is working with community partners just to try and attract more students to deposit at our bank. And CHI is one of our community partners, JPP is another partner, and then Michael's Foods plans to offer incentives to our students. So those are some things that we're doing to promote our pirate branch in the next couple of months.
Okay, we'll move on into number seventeen, President's Report. And the first thing I want to say is that Dr. Arl, not here tonight, obviously, but he did want to play a message, an audio message. Kyle has run that through the speakers over here. Kyle, run that through the speakers over here.
To the students of Plainview Public Schools, this is Dr. Arl. We teach you a variety of lessons here at school. Most are intentional and content-related, and we hope they help you pass a test. And maybe it grows into a body of knowledge that benefits you as you journey through school and into adulthood. Other lessons come from the wisdom that we have gained through years of life experiences. These lessons matter as much or more than those that help you pass a test. I have been out of the classroom for many years, but I still consider myself a teacher, and I have a small lesson that I wanna share from what I have experienced these last couple of weeks. Pirates are known to be bold, daring, adventurous, and cavalier. Those characteristics can lead you to success, but they can also lead you into treacherous waters. Be wise when revealing anything from your heart on social media. If you feel you must say it, let it marinate for a bit in your head before you say it. Will what you say inflame or calm? Will it bring hurt or comfort? Is it true? Is it necessary to say? If you don't want to lose control of your life, don't lose control of your self-discipline. If you wanna write your own story, maintain self-discipline, otherwise, someone else may try to define who you are. Staying humble and disciplined should counteract the tendency to be inconsiderate that sometimes comes with being cavalier. If you do hurt someone intentionally or not, say you are sorry once and mean it. Saying you are sorry over and over again won't change someone's heart who just isn't in a place to accept your apology. You cannot control whether they forgive you or not, that is on them. But we know that God forgives and gives second chances, but not just a second or third chance for forgiveness, or even seven times a forgiveness, but seventy times seven times. He will forgive us. If someone ever tells you they are sorry, don't say, "That's okay." Say instead, "I forgive you." The world needs more forgiveness. That is what heals hearts. And extending forgiveness heals hearts, beginning with your own. Don't spend time fretting over and trying to deal with something you cannot control, most notably what people think and say about you. They are entitled to their opinions about you, and you are entitled to ignore them. Always try to leave people feeling better after having had an interaction with you. If you ever need people to come to your aid, they are much more likely to do so if they have warm and positive feelings about you. Judge people mercifully, especially if you know nothing about them, and remember, the measure you use to make judgments will be the same measure used against you. Be gentle on people who have little to no idea what they are going through. The higher you achieve in society, the larger the target on your back, but don't shy away from striving for greatness and don't apologize for it. Be graceful and build up those around you, that will minimize the size of the target on your back. It's my pleasure to be your superintendent, and I look forward to rejoining you soon to bring honor back to Plainview Public Schools. Until then, as I tell so many of you every morning, don't forget to be awesome today.
Couple of things I wanted to mention. N E S B, we've been talking with Marsha from N E S B about possibly having a board retreat at one of these times. Said we would like to get it done before springtime, obviously. She does have some time in the month of March. Kind of a, a retreat to set goals and, and just move the district forward. She's thrown out some dates, March seventh, March twelfth, or March twenty-fifth. So you guys think about that if you have any dates to work on. She comes from Lincoln, so. Seventh to twelfth, twenty-fifth, yeah. She comes from Lincoln, so it'd be nice if we could maybe do it maybe late afternoon, so she didn't have to look back really late.
It's just one, we don't stay overnight either.
No, no, it's right, she is great for the drivers. It's just a, a work, work session. We did one out, it's been planned.
Uh, probably over four years, anyway.
It was the year after before you just like, like.
For that, okay.
It was open to something.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
It's two hours, two and a half hours, probably, or something like that.
It was, it was long.
I don't know.
She's passionate.
Yeah. But it's something we've been talking about, so I'd like you to consider that for dates. We also need to set a meeting time for next month, and this month we were going to have a new meeting, and obviously that, that changed, so if you guys can be okay with a new meeting the next.
Yeah, all right.
What kind of plan on that?
That would be like the eleventh, right?
Yeah, I think eleven, twelve.
Second one.
Eleven.
Second one.
Yep.
Probably, we in that elementary, we're probably in much at school.
You can take the tour after the meeting.
Yeah, the tour. We'll meet over there in the elementary library. We do, under the. Otherwise, that is all I have. I appreciate everybody coming tonight, appreciate your passion for the district. I hope that we can move forward. We're gonna return.